Mike, I'm sorry, I had two things I needed to add that I didn't.
Mike.
Can you please add a CCB application and the concrete job estimate?
EB, what app?
Applications and then concrete job estimate.
Uh, probably agenda, public comment, minutes, warrants, correspondence, two thousand twenty-four tax rate, CAT TV discussion, contract discussion, changes to the open meeting law discussion, town on emergency services discussion, policy review and possible approvals, staff and vows process discussion, executive for personnel, possible action, transfer station dive description review and approval, public comment, executive adjourn. The CCB application we will put in. Uh, let's see, after Alan's done.
I under ten A.
Yeah, it was ten A. And the concrete job estimate. Um, I guess we can do is ten B.
Okay.
Should be pretty quick.
Yeah, really quick.
Undertaking motion approved.
So moved with the changes.
Second.
Any discussion? I will be there. Any public comment, Hannah? Approval of minutes, minutes of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Back in it.
Any comments, deletions, corrections? All in fair.
Hi.
Substance stand. Warrants, counts payable July nineteenth, fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-two cents.
So moved.
Back in it.
Questions, comments? All in fair.
Hi.
Counts payable July twenty-sixth, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Payrolls July nineteenth, twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in there.
Hi.
Uh, payroll July twenty-sixth, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments? All in there.
Hi.
Uh, correspondence, celebrate panel day information, reminder from Jennifer about the, uh, some of the chair of Parks and Rock. Panel day.
Okay, the third annual celebrate panel day hosted by Faith Church is slated for Saturday, July twenty-seventh, from eleven to three. Um, at the ball field behind the fire station, that is, of course, this Saturday. This event serves an important role in connecting panel residents of all ages and strengthening our community cohesiveness and pride. Parks and Rock will once again be hosting the town picnic at the event, free of charge. The event will also feature new and returning local community groups, organizations, and vendors, as well as many fun, no-cost activities for families to enjoy. I would encourage the select board to mark your calendars, as this is one of the largest town gatherings of the year. Um, if you would like to help the town picnic, feel free to reach out, heard directly, that's from Jen.
I'll be there at nine.
Fire.
No. Help me pick up, pick up, clean up and serve all day.
I'll be there all day too.
I'm gonna try to make it down, let's see how the heck's doing.
I'll push it downhill.
We can get a wheelchair where you might, you know that.
I'm good with the portion stuff. I can not. It's not sure how long. Uh, that's it on correspondence?
Yeah.
Um, tax rate discussion in action. Hello, Ellen.
Hello, Mike. You wanna come back or you want to?
You don't, you don't have to, but if you wanna answer questions so people hear you or whatever.
We have a wonderful chair, I reset.
Thanks.
Just for you.
Mm-hmm.
Everything you have is also online in a packet.
Right.
From our website.
Right.
And they've all given to you, so I get it.
Yeah.
I didn't.
It's up to you guys to say.
Did you, did you get any, um, questions from any board members? I know that was in the email and I know I didn't have any questions.
I did, from Bill this morning.
Okay.
And, um, I answered all those questions. Um, just a quick rundown. State sets the non-residential and homestead tax rate. I have nothing to do with that. As a town, we have nothing to do that with that, that comes down from the state of Vermont. Um, the general fund tax rate is set on, uh, we vote on it in March, so it's about to be raised by taxes, X amount of dollars. Um, that X amount of dollars is on page two. General fund amount to be raised by taxes is five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-three cents, plus ballot articles, three hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Total general fund monies to be raised by taxes is eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, nine, or eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. The road fund, um, the amount to be raised by taxes was nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Town also voted on that in March. Uh, the local agreement tax, um, amount to be raised is eighty-six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. That's the overage that we vote, um, anything over the, I think it's ten grand, the state automatically gives to veterans that qualify. Um, it, it's money off the assessed value of their home, so we pick up the difference. And that all comes from the grand list, cause the veterans information goes into the grand list, so that is a tax rate. Um, so it's the general road and local agreement, which that rate came to point six-five-seven-seven. Total homestead tax rate, one point nine-nine-eight-seven, plus the bond of seventy-five dollars, um, developed. And if you're an undeveloped parcel, just land, it's thirty-seven-fifty. Non-residential tax rates, two point four oh four-five, plus the bond is seventy-five or thirty-seven-fifty, cause that's a separate. And that's the bond money to be paid is also calculated by the grand list. That number, the seventy-five and thirty-seven-fifty, the assessors put in the grand list when they're creating our grand list to bill out. Um, I'm just kinda going through this, cause we have two new select board members, so for who to read, to re, um, do everything in third page, cause of comparison. And it tells you that everything went up.
Everything.
Everything, general fund, road fund, um, homestead rate, non-residential rate. There's been an increase, there was a little increase in our grand list. Um, also that shows on the bottom. I did not do percentages, I didn't go through all that.
But our, so just not to interrupt, but because, because the question they're gonna come up out there, just a blink. Um, general fund tax rate comparisons, um, twenty-twenty-three was point two-nine-two-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Two thousand twenty-four was point three-zero-eight-six per difference in point zero-one-five. So when we say it went up, it's a minimal.
General, yeah, the general.
General fund.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And the road also went up a little bit more than that.
Yep.
But the biggest jump, so last year, the state of Vermont's homestead non-residential rate actually went down. This year, it went way up, so we just picked up what it should have gone up.
Last year.
Right, if they would have left it alone last year, this year wouldn't have been such a jump, but they also go on budgets and et cetera. So everybody that votes, this is.
Oh, mm-hmm.
This is it.
Right.
Whether it's the school or the, the town. Um, the numbers are the numbers, the grand list is current grand list at this time. Our, um, the CLA is way down, and now we're down to seventy-nine percent. That's why we're looking at getting ready for that reappraisal. That had to do with all the large sales, um, of all those homes. We're not the only town, pretty much every state or town in, um, the state of Vermont is having a reappraisal. And that's why we're out to twenty-twenty-five.
Yep.
Um, the whole packet has all the backup from the numbers to show that I pulled the numbers from what was voted on.
Right.
If a ballot article doesn't pass, then it wouldn't be calculated into this, even though it was on the vote. If, if something doesn't pass, then that would have come off of totals. Um, our budget and everything passed. So the tax rates are as I read them. And I just, to set the tax rate. And taxes are due November eighth, twenty-twenty-four, five P M, and I will be at the office till five P M. Postmark is accepted. Um, I guess that's it.
Any questions, Ellen, anyone?
I had one, but it's not like a pertinent question, it was on the build grand list. Uh, that were, so we're against down on the subtract, those are dollars, not acres, I assume.
They're dollars.
They're dollars, okay.
Yeah, the amount, total amount, uh, between homes, non-homestead, homestead, local agreement, rural, road and general total tax amount from our grand list for twenty-twenty-four is six million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Yeah.
That is how much is going to be raised by taxes from our grand list this year. Last year was five million, something, five, eight, nine, I don't know.
What's the board's plan?
So moved.
Set the tax rate at point zero-six-five-seven-seven.
No.
Oh.
Set the homestead tax rate at one point nine-nine-eight-seven on the very bottom of that page.
Yeah, all righty.
And then the non-residential rate.
I'll entertain a motion to set the homestead tax rate at one point nine-nine-eight-seven, plus the seventy-five dollars for the bond.
So moved.
Back in it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Undertaking motion to set the non-residential at two point four-zero-four-five, plus the seventy-five dollars for the bond.
So moved.
Second it.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
CAT TV contract discussion.
So at the last meeting, you all discussed that you wanted to know why it was different on the letter versus on the input on the estimate. It was like four hundred dollars per year, per year versus a seventy per quarter. It was because he was looking at.
Two different contracts.
Two different years. Yes. So I have the current contract, if you guys are ready to execute that.
Um, I never did see an answer from Lisa on the question that I proposed into the contract about.
Getting, yeah, getting it on.
If there was, if they did not cover, um, the town meeting live, what the repercussions could be for the town. She never answered that, that I saw.
She did not, but she did send, um, screenshots of proof that it was live.
And that's fine, I still am a little disappointed that I didn't get any sort of an answer on, um, what the town could have for, for a repercussion if, if she didn't, or they didn't, actually, if they didn't, um, cover the town meeting live. I mean, that's part of our contract, I don't anticipate them um, not covering it, but I just.
Being billed, will be billed differently now, before we were paying ahead, now we'll be paying for what is actually done, we'll be paying after the fact. So there's that, if it's not done, then it's.
Right, so I guess, I guess that would, um,
we're paying for services that have been rendered, no, services that will be rendered.
Right.
Correct. Which is fine, and then.
From last year.
That's right, and then the, the town meeting obviously is in March, and we would renew this contract next July, and we could certainly have repercussions to.
At the, yeah.
At that time.
Okay.
And for clarification, I did watch the last meeting. Um, it is seventy dollars per quarter. Um, not four hundred dollars a year for the closed captioning, so for a total of two hundred and eighty dollars for the year. I know that was a question that you guys had there. And I apologize for the last meeting, but I wasn't ready to come in yet, or even jump. What's the board's plan?
I make a motion that we accept the contract for CAT TV for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Second it.
Any more discussion on this? I think we have a few things that we can, certainly we have a little repercussion this time for, for change. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Host.
So carried. Only the one place to have.
Yeah. So we do CCB up on A?
Oh, yeah, ten A is CCB.
So I have an application for a tier-one small cultivator. It's a renewal, um, for tree frog farms, I'll also just a formality.
Make a move.
They send any for samples?
No.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Um, concrete job bid estimate?
Um, I'm just basically looking for the board's blessing to get estimates for the concrete job that we have out back. The person who gave us that estimate before, um, who did the front locks, doesn't have time. So, um, we've actually been really struggling to find somebody to do it, so um, certainly call and offer your services if you do that type of work, or looking for sidewalks and a concrete parking pad. Um, but I'm afraid if I put it out to bid, I'm not gonna get, I might not get anything, and then it's a waste of time and money, so I'd rather just, Hannah's been calling and we've been trying to get estimates.
Our, our F P as far as dimensions. So whoever's coming to bid the work.
Um, I mean, we can, we, one would ask the estate specs to the, um.
There must be an original.
Yeah, the original plans, the original plans are.
So that everybody, I know you're asking, wants everybody apples to apples.
Yeah, I define everybody to get the same.
All right.
Yeah, that can.
That way the bids coincide to what we're requesting.
Okay, that's just for outback.
It's just outback, it's the, it's the ramps for the P H S and the.
That's something that you could help, um, they'll draw, you know, just as you're here and, you know, just kinda look at it.
Plans called for a sidewalk across the whole back, and that's just creates more need for railings and other things, so we'd rather, I think as a group, we decided it was best to do like ramps to a parking pad, and then we can pave.
Right, just kinda get some dimensions out there.
I know, somebody, uh, Scott did mention that somebody was, Eric had contacted somebody.
Okay.
Says Scott, Scott this weekend.
Did you? Okay.
Uh.
Hopefully they'll call, I've, I've tried a couple that Eric did, did mention, so we can try them again.
Just so that everybody, when they do give us an estimate, they're comparing apples to apples, somebody's not doing a twenty-foot square. Or honestly, be doing a ten-foot square parking area, you're right, and then so you're wrong. Interesting. Perfect.
Pitch.
Go ahead, we'll, we'll get that started, get that process started.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Once I have the, the specs of standards, though, I can get estimate.
Right, yes. Do we need a motion or not, or we good, just, I wanna go ahead?
I think we're good.
I wanna go ahead.
Let me too, I'm fine with it. Um, changes to open meeting law discussion.
Um, so I had a request just to share this information with the public, that there has been some change to the open meeting law. Um, beginning July one of two thousand twenty-four, public bodies must comply with Act one thirty-three, which amends the open meeting law as follows, that distinguishes among state and local non-advisory and advisory bod- bodies. It's gonna be tough to get through. A non-advisory body is a supervision, control, or jurisdiction over legislative quasi-judicial tax or budgetary matters. Um, an advisory body does not have any of the above powers. Authorizes remote-only meetings for advisory public bodies, subject to remote public participation requirements, and for all public bodies under specified emergency circumstances. Beginning January one of two thousand twenty-five, requires hybrid meetings for state decision-making, non-advisory bodies. Um, and I wanna say a lot of these we're already, um, doing, we were already doing previously. Um, upon request, provides a limited right to local residents, the body's members, and the press for in-person or remote access to any regular meeting. Requires state and local decision-making, non-advisory bodies to electronically record meetings and post the recordings to a designated electronic location. Uh, requires each municipality to post on its website, if it maintains or designates one, the procedures for filing an O M, O M L complaint and the text of the relevant statute. That was added to our, um, helpful links on our website, so you can now, um, if you would like to make that, uh, complaint, an O M L violation complaint, you can do so on our website. Uh, beginning January one twenty-five, requires annual O M L training for state chairs of decision-making, non-advisory bodies, for local chairs of legislative bodies, municipal managers, and mayors. So that means we're all going to training in January, just so you know. And establishes a work group chaired by the Secretary of State to recommend ways to improve access and participation in meetings, public bodies, um, meetings of the voters and elections.
Question on that, Tara, I don't know if you know the answer to it. Is that required, is that class required for all heads of all the, um, different, like, it's planning, zoning?
It says non-advisory, and yeah.
So everybody has, has to.
Um, yes, if you, if they're participating in meetings, any sort of government body meetings, yes, I would. I would, um, assume. Uh, and more guidance on this, it can be found at the Secretary of State, um, V L C T, Vermont Leading Cities and Towns, and then the School Boards Association. Yeah, there.
All right. More fun stuff from the state.
Okay. On, on emergency just, uh, services discussion.
Um, so before we jump into it, can you all make a meeting August twelfth at six? The panel protective association.
This folks.
And six. On a Monday?
Yeah.
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 Okay, so then we'll have our last remote meeting with them. And then if any other agencies wanna, uh, schedule one, they can reach out. And I wanted to just have this discussion, because at many of the remote meetings, uh, for emergency services, like the rescue squad and the fire departments, it's obvious that they, um, might need, or in the future might need, town support um, in various ways, and you weren't able to sort of give me direction, or your blessing to look into different ways that might happen. And I know that you've invited the rescue squad to come in August. Um, and I'd like to be able to do research and things before that, or to, to know what you're looking for, um, what direction you want me to go. What's that?
Um, so you're looking for something like, we would give you, let you run with it, and then come back and report back to the board?
I don't want to run with that wording anymore.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, I'm just trying to figure the right word.
Find it.
Those words are nice.
Uh, hey.
Um, but we.
I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to.
With the, um, so the one fire department is looking for a new building, and they mentioned grants and public grants, I'm looking at that, the rescue squad is looking for, for more, uh, more in-depths.
I think what Tara's, I think what Tara's looking for here, we've had this discussion a little bit, her and I, and she's looking for the go-ahead from the select board. Um, and it's a conversation that I've had with, with both fire departments and, and the rescue squad. Um, trying to figure out some, um, some ways of funding emergency services in the town of panel that don't hit the taxpayers as hard as couldn't happen, right, is that fair to say? And I'm asking, uh, for those of you who can't see, uh, you know, we have Jason on the instance, and Craig Goldell here right now, from Palm Fire Protective in Palm Valley, so I'm asking them that question, is that, is that a fair assessment of what we're trying to do?
Exactly.
Okay. And, and I mean, I think that's, you know, general discussion, we haven't had this discussion with Craig, in all fairness, really officially in a meeting, we've had this discussion, we had this discussion at the firehouse in Palm Valley at Center Station with, with Jason, and we had it with Becky at the rescue squad. Unfortunately, it was kinda my fault that we canceled your, one, you know, one of the reasons Craig was, was me canceling your, your meeting, and I apologize for that, but.
I think it's, it's easier in some ways for municipalities to get grants.
Yes, yes, it is.
And they're having to hire grant writers when I could be.
I just think it's time that, um, I think it's time that, that the select boards, uh, the select board acknowledges the fact that, um, the days of, um, the days of a chicken barbecue, you know, you know, um, other fundraisers are gone to, to try to fund fire service, you know, emergency services, I'm not gonna, I, I, you know, I apologize to Becky, but it should be emergency services um, in, in our town.
So what do we want?
We step up and try to figure out, or help our emergency services providers with ways for funding.
Other, other avenues.
That's right. Other avenues.
So do we wanna authorize Tara from meeting with them?
I, we have, we should, we should, we should, yeah, but we should some, looking for us to give authorization to.
Anything with us.
I think she's looking for, I think Tara's looking for authorization.
We've had this discussion, I think she's looking for authorization to start researching some different avenues of funding for emergency services in the town.
Yeah, I will make a motion that we authorize Tara to do um, research into other financing of emergency services in the town of Palm. Back in it.
Do you have any more discussion? And at this point, because, because you guys are here, Craig and, and Jason, I'm gonna ask you before we go, um, do you have any input, comments, anything on this before we make a vote? I mean, you guys took time to come here, so.
We were looking for help, um, ideas. We were looking at some increases in the next, shortly, the next year or two, um, just nothing to do with any of building, just operating costs, insurance, just going through the roof, real costs.
Are you comfortable with having Tara start doing some research? Okay. And, and like I said, I think it's the select board responsibility. Um, I, I think it's time the select board takes responsibility for some of this and, and says, hey, let's, let's see what we can do to help our emergency services providers out, so, um, any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Um, balance review and possible approvals. Everybody saw those?
Yeah, I've got four of them today.
You wanna do them individually?
Um, or just list them all? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we have, we have the emergency action plan?
That health and safety plan, emergency action plan, which was reviewed by Craig. Um, the workers' compensation practices policy, and the transitional return to work combined, um, and record inspection copying and transmission policy.
Anybody, um, have an opposition to you doing them all at once?
No.
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve those four policies.
So moved.
As written.
As written.
As written.
Have a motion every second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Staff eval evaluation process discussion.
Um, this is just a pretty quick, quick one, too, we made the evaluation. We didn't really set a schedule or how you wanted to do that. Um, you know, for a lot of employees, it's kind of obvious, they would look for their department head, but then you have like me, Hannah, Wendy, Mike, um, health officer, animal control, there's ones that don't necessarily have a supervisor. Health officer, animal control, there's ones that don't necessarily have a supervisor, it's more they report directly to you. Um, so do we want to have them completed and then have? Like a cycle meeting where we just. Meet with people, do you not want to meet with people, do you want to, you still want to file, I'm not really sure how you.
We even set up uh like a work meeting before to do those.
Yes.
It's always been a while, but.
My opinion on that is we should, um. It should be done before. The fiscal year starts. About a little bit. Because raises to mental effect on uh as a rule on on July one. So I think.
It's in the middle.
I think, um. The evaluation should be completed before that. Because if we have an employee who's not, um. Uh, you know, doing their job according to what they should be doing or whatever, then. Then we might, we can discuss a raise, to do a raise is not automatic, right?
Right.
That's, I just think it should be completed prior to July one.
May and June.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
And then that that kind of helps too, because we do policy sign up, like the personnel policy sign offs and.
Mm hmm.
I do all the drivers' records checks in July and all of a sudden. So we'll, we'll hold off on doing any unless there's. A particular instance where you want to make sure it gets done, I guess.
I just think that makes.
Isn't any currently, but if there is, we could do.
Right, I think it makes more sense to me that you do an evaluation. Prior to giving somebody a raise. You know, and then, you know, having them sign their personnel policy and everything else, we're gone on July one.
And department heads. Will meet with you. And share their employee feedback if there was any, but then. The employees that report directly to you will have individual meetings with you.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yep, and we should, we actually should probably schedule that now so that we have it in. Right, so so the the employees that report directly to the select board. We should have office. Because, because I don't want to do it all in May and June, right? So office personnel. Should come in. And maybe April. Yeah, I'm just throwing, I'm throwing things out there, feel free to change, anything you guys want to. This, this this part flying, flying out of my head right now. And then our department heads. You know, May and June. Um, you know, we can schedule some other stuff in there too, and our department heads can come in and say, look at, you know, I have, here's my evaluations for. So we can come in and say, here's my evaluations for. My road crew members.
Right.
Right? And everything's going good, but I'm having a little trouble with person Y.
Right.
And, you know, and then we can, we can address that, it gives us a little time.
Yep.
Right? Same, same thing with Darcy or anybody else, Tom or whoever.
Okay.
Right? Just to give you a schedule.
I just kind of want to write up a policy to go with it, I don't think we did, so I think.
Right, I know where you're headed with that, but I'm giving, I just want to give you some guidance on that, so you're not trying to do it yourself and figure it all out.
There was a process, but we lost it somewhere, now we're getting back to a process, I think.
Exactly.
No, I was.
Yeah. It existed at one point, so we're getting there.
That's, that's an honest statement.
Yes. Okay, that's all I had to say.
Moving right on. Um. So next agenda item is executive for personnel. I want to take a motion to enter executive for personnel.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I want to take a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Back it up.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there will be, not be any action taken. Um, transfer station job script and review and approval. Anybody want those?
Yep.
Yep.
Nobody's happy with that?
Yep.
Yep.
I want to take a motion to approve.
So move, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, public comment?
No answer there.
No answer?
No.
I will entertain a motion to enter into executive for contractual.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Press up.
Press up. I want to take a motion to come out of executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, we'll see you in a couple weeks.